Let's call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of Bella Vista City Council, August 28, 2023. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Wanda.
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Here.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hunchell?
Here.
And Mayor?
Here.
Okay, first item on the agenda is citizen input. Per the rules, there's a three-minute-per-person time limit to address council on any topic of the person's choosing. Total, well, I don't need to worry about total time tonight, we just have a few people signed up. First person on the list is Nana Fernandez of 56 South Chestnut Drive in Bella Vista. You have to come up to the microphone, please.
Thank you very much for your time, ladies and gentlemen, and members of the body. I'd like to thank you for this time today. I will address the development of walking trails that areas-
Hang on, we can't hear you at all. You almost have to eat it.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council and members of the body, I'd like to thank you for this time. Today, I address the development of walking trails across the areas of Lechworth, Groves, and Rochefoger. Recently, I discovered that these trails were coming in with a couple guys unidentified crossing across my property, marking the end of my property. With no warning or consulting, I am one of the members of the community, and a foot trail is planned, the Pinion Creek Trail, that would be running alongside property lines and across untouched vegetation. A $2 million gift, as Mr. Culpepper calls it. He is a member of Trails and Act of Transportation for the city of Bella Vista, and who I had to reach out to in order to be informed on why people were examining land on my, and around my property. A one-and-a-half-mile gift that will give access for residents to go walking around the hill cap and floodlands of the streets named previously. Now, I have lived here, excuse me for a second. Now, I have lived here with my husband and five boys for over 20 years at this property. We, like many others, moved here because of the peace, quiet, and natural beauty Bella Vista provides. I do not see how adding this Pinion Creek Trail is going to help exploit any of that. The kids in the community have always explored the woods, and with trails already around this area, why disturb something good? So with this $2 million gift from the Trailblazers organization, why not maintain what we already have? Because for those unaware, Bella Vista has seven lengths, over 160 miles, of walking, hiking, and biking trails that exploit some of Bella Vista's most scenic and beautiful areas: Tannure Creek, the Back Forty, in which 22 miles of that is already in the Back Forty, which is the area where I live; Diamond Trail, Ton of Vision Trail, Blowing Springs, Little Sugar Creek. We've seen increase of people parking on the side of the road to gain access to certain parts of the trail because they don't always use trail heads that aren't considered a launch point. Loud music played by mountain bikers, trash like wrappers, water bottles, even beer cans are appearing where hence they don't belong, and you've never seen them before. What you bring in bothers me because of what you drive out, like Natural Rock Springs, which is what you're going to interfere by putting Pinion Creek Trail there. What you bring in bothers me because of what you drive out, like Natural Rocks Springs, an abundance of wildlife, which I don't fence my property. I allow things to move in and out freely, and I would like that to not be disturbed, and the peace for many. And so what you plan to build there is going to drive other things out, and I just don't think it's a good place for a trail. And it's going to be encompassing almost my whole property, my lot and my property. And I'm up on a hill, so to have, and that was part of the reason why I chose where I'm at, is because it is private, it is high up, it is beautiful. And to put a trail right in my backyard, I do and have gone on trails before, but I end up in somebody's backyard. To me, that's not scenic, that's not enjoyable, and that's not what I look, that's not what I'm looking for when I go on a nature walk. I don't want to hear somebody's dog's barking. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The next speaker is Kimberly Hunchell of One Scott Circle in Bella Vista.
Hi, guys. I'm really nervous, so I'm just going to read this and get through it. This is my husband's proposal, but I just wanted to throw my two cents in as a citizen. When we moved up here, we looked at 40-something houses. Our real estate agent tried to convince us to look at sister cities, but once we saw all of the trees in Bella Vista and research amenities, we were sold. During the recent housing boom, it's been very disheartening to see all the lots they've been clearcutting. Gordon Hollow used to be my favorite part about driving home, and I'd really hate to see that happen again. Also, burying the power lines just makes sense to me aesthetically and with all the power outages that we have here all the time. Most of our neighboring communities already do this, so I'm in favor of these proposals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mehdi Yaki of 47 South Chestnut Drive.
I'm going to be piggybacking off of Nanette's speech. We live adjacent to her, and we're one of four houses on South Chestnut Drive. One of the mentions of the benefits of this trail is that it provides access for residents. There's probably 10 houses total in a one-mile circumference of this area. It's false with that plane, or the premise that they're proposing to sunder. Also, one thing I read, and my primary concern, my kids go down into that ravine, is the potential for predators. And I understood that trails can't be built within 2,000 miles of any registered sex offender. It's within 600 feet of one that's living, you know, in our vicinity. So I'm opposed to it for the sake of my kids and for the sake of future children. There are new families that have moved in our vicinity that also access these woods to enjoy them. I just don't want to see strangers coming into a place where children play that we don't know the history of, especially knowing the background of one person that lives in our region. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next speaker is Christian Henning of Seven Longview Lane.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about two separate things that, to me, relate quite closely. The first one being the salary increase that's on the agenda tonight. I was glad to see Councilmember Wasniak propose to separate the city council from the clerk and the mayor. Quite frankly, when you all ran for office, you didn't seem to have a problem with the current salary, and then now you ask for more, and you compare yourselves to Siloan Springs and Rogers and all these other places, but we aren't them, and we're not acting like that. They livestream their city council meetings. I've asked each and every single one of you before about livestreaming meetings. I've been told anything from, oh, keep the private citizens doing it, we don't have the technology, it's too expensive, all of these things, and yet you turn around and you compare yourselves to these cities that are doing it. I called Springdale, Siloan Springs, which is mentioned frequently on that document, and Rogers. All three of those cities livestream their meetings either through Zoom, through YouTube, directly on their website, and they do these things, yet we want to compare ourselves to them for salary purposes and not do what they can do, which is the simplest thing, that half these people are here over and over again. We get maybe three or four people that show up that are new people because the meetings are at 6:30. Most people are working until 6:00. We got special meetings at 3 o'clock on a weekday that get announced, you know, the week of to pass legislation. That's not how you get people involved. If you want a raise, earn it. You don't get a 10% raise at your job. I would love one if I can just say, hey, I think I need more money. Absolutely, the clerk deserves more money. The mayor one, I think that should be separate, too. I think six figures is pretty far up there, and we're adding, you know, 10 grand more. That's quite a large number. I think I can speak, everybody here probably wants, you know, $10,000 more as well. But I know Councilmember Wilms, you told me it would be too expensive to livestream city council meetings before we moved over here. We're talking $5,000 a year just for city council. That's plenty of money to livestream meetings. You said it would be too expensive to have someone work here. I am certain you could find someone to do it for $880 a year to show up to meetings, to livestream, push a button, and go sit, make sure nothing goes wrong. So if you're going to ask for money, earn it. If you're going to compare yourselves to other cities, do the simple things that they do, get people involved. We're a city of 30,000, let's start acting like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any council member reply?
The only question I had was for Ms. Fernandez, what was your, what was your address? I didn't catch that.
56-
56?
56 South Chestnut.
Thank you.
Larry?
I guess I have a couple of comments. I know from an email that was sent out to all of the council members that a survey apparently was taken by the POA. I don't know when that survey was taken, whether it was recent or a long time ago, and it may have said it in the note, and I may have read it too quickly, but the bottom line was is that the survey asked about whether the members wanted more walking trails in the city or in the POA. And the answer came back a resounding two-thirds no and one-third yes, was what the survey results were that were communicated to us. So just as a frame of reference from the two speakers tonight, I, without separating the various trails that are being proposed in the package, I tend to support the addition of those trails, in part because of the, being a part of our 2040 Plan recommends that we do add trail mileage to our system every year, so, and we've adopted that plan. The cost of installing it is basically zero for us. We share with the POA the maintenance costs, as I understand it. So that's where our impact will be, is the maintenance cost for that addition. So the second thing, Christian Henning was right in saying that I did respond and speak with him about the livestreaming, and those were numbers that I had received from talking with our technical staff in the city, and thought that it would be more difficult. With the new facility here, it may become easier to do, something that we need to look at for sure with our budgeting for next year. So just to try and address that. I think, I don't know what the other council members feel about it, but it may be a benefit to our community.
Anybody else from council? Jerry Snow?
I'll address the trails issue. I personally have no problem with the trails. Only problem I have with trails is that I'm not physically able to enjoy them, to ride a bicycle and enjoy those trails. But as Mr. Wilms pointed out, in 2021, there was a survey by the POA, and I think 12,000 people responded to that survey, and it was, as I said, a two-thirds majority was opposed to additional trails. I guess the question is, is when is enough enough? I don't, I don't know when we, when we reach that point, or when, if we have a plan to reach that point, but again, just a point of reference there.
I had just a couple of comments. On the trails issue, I do have some familiarity with that survey. You know, in discussing with Tom Judson, he pointed out to me that you could bring up just about anything, and less than 50% would be for it. Less than 50% of the people play golf, less than 50% of the people use the pools, less than 50% of the people use the athletic equipment, weightlifting and whatnot. You know, I was involved in the sporting goods industry for a number of years, and I noticed in all these different sports, all these different activities, it's always a minority of participants. I do think the trails have been a spectacular success for Bella Vista, and they've had all kinds of positive impacts, and so that's all I'm going to mention about that. On the livestreaming, you know, I've discussed this with BCTV, they're planning to livestream, and they've been hamstrung a little bit by, we had some new sound equipment in this new facility, and it's still not in. Like a lot of things nowadays, there was a problem getting live equipment in, and the livestreaming is still something that's planned. It was held up, unfortunately, because we're still not working on, this isn't our sound system, we're still not working on our real sound system, so that is something that's planned. And it's a good point, we want to have as much outreach and transparency as possible for the citizens, but it is something that we're still hoping to get put together in the near-term future. So next thing on the agenda is action on the minutes. The July 12, 2023 special meeting. Any comments? Does someone want to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
That's Mr. Hunchell and Mr. Fowler. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Hunchell?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next minutes are the regular meeting of July 24, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wilms. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Wilms?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hunchell?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next subject is reports. We have the financial report for the period ending June 30, 2023, and it continues to be positive. Our total operating revenues are 12.8% above last year, and they're also well above budget. And our total operating expenses are significantly below the budget, so, and we continue to have a significant reserve. So we feel pretty good about the finances and continue to have a pretty good year, all things being considered. I should mention, on the operating revenue side, city sales tax, county sales tax, and property tax revenue, all those categories are up from last year. Next item is a proclamation about Septic Smart Week, which is September 18 to 22. Mayor's proclamation, whereas proper septic system use and routine care are vital to protecting public health, preserving our highly valued groundwater, lakes, streams, and waterways, and avoiding costly repairs that can result from neglect. And whereas nearly 75% of homes in Bella Vista, Arkansas have wastewater treated by septic systems. And whereas wastewater professionals of Benton County, Arkansas, and the state of Arkansas use their expertise in the, in the design, installation, maintenance, and regulation of septic systems in Bella Vista. And whereas the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's Septic Smart Program, used by Arkansas and Benton County health officials, does educate homeowners about the need for proper septic system use and routine maintenance. And whereas residents in the environment of the city of Bella Vista, Arkansas benefit from properly designed, installed, operated, and maintained septic systems. Now therefore, I, John D. Flynn, Mayor of Bella Vista, do hereby proclaim the week of September 18 to 22, 2023, as Septic Smart Week in the city of Bella Vista, Arkansas, and I urge all people to join me in this special observance. Sign this 16th day of August, 2023. John D. Flynn, Mayor. I believe there's a special program, Taylor, I want to say it's September 22. I think it's a Thursday evening.
21st at 6:00 p.m.
Oh, okay, September 21 at 6:00 p.m. So that'll be held here in the court, and we had one of those last year in the old district court, it's very well-attended, and really had some great information there. So put that on your calendars, please. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules of order and procedure to allow all ordinances on the agenda to be read by title only.
So who?
Second.
It was Mr. Snow and Mr. Wilms. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Hunchell?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Thank you. That was six to zero, passed. Item A is an ordinance amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map the rezoned property described in rezoning petition number 2023-49912, carnal county parcel number 16-40236-000, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. This is on second reading, and the city staff, I believe, has suggested that we table this and ordinance B, and proceed to ordinance C.
I'd like to make a motion to table indefinitely, second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hunchell.
Both, both, item A and item B?
Does he have to read B?
No.
Okay, then both item A and B then, okay. Second.
Okay, both, that's both item A and B. Any discussion?
Why are we re-tableing them?
Well, it's replaced by item C under New Business.
Yeah, item C kind of combined the two properties, so.
Procedural question, attorney, do we need to read the title for the second one to make a good?
No, if Mr. Hunchell or Ms. Fowler asked me that, no. Go ahead, move to table indefinitely, both of those, you can proceed with the agenda.
Okay, roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hunchell?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero, to table those two items. Okay, item C is an ordinance amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map the rezoned property described in rezoning petition numbers 2023-49912, county parcel number 16-40236-000, and 2023-49795, county parcel number 16-79388000, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C2 Light Commercial District and P1 Conservation District, as described and mapped herein. And staff request move the third and final reading. Is there discussion?
I would like to make a motion, suspend the rules, and move to third and final, second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hunchell. Any more discussion on that? Roll call, vote.
Hunchell?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. I'll read it for the third and final time. Amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map the rezoned property described in rezoning petition numbers 2023-49912, county parcel number 16-40236-000, and 2023-49795, county parcel number 16-79388-000, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C2 Light Commercial District and P1 Conservation District, as described and mapped herein.
Now, I know this is only like actually the first reading for this one, it would have been the second if we would have left it like it was, right? But all I want to say is it just makes sense to go to third and final. We've discussed it at length during the first conversation, and as per the recommendation, actually, of the planning department, it actually came up in a city council meeting that it made sense to go from a C1 to a C2, a little bit higher-intensity commercial district, because there's a C4 right behind it across Little Sugar Creek, and then, you know, you have other commercial around it, all, you know, surrounding it, so I don't know if anything else additional needs to be said, but this rezone just completely makes sense.
I guess the request originally to the planning commissioner was to C1, I think because we have a lot of C1 area that's in the city, and it made sense to request that zoning when the application came in from the owner. I would agree that the staff recommendation to rezonate to C2 makes more sense because of its location. It's separated from any residential property by streets or the creek bed, so it's an isolated, allowing more intense commercial development to take place there in the event that it becomes proposed. So C2 includes the C1 uses, but adds additional heavier uses, more intense, so it should not be a conflict with residential properties. So I support it as well.
Okay, why don't we go ahead with the roll call vote?
Motion to approve. You need a motion to approve and a second?
Oh, right, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve, second.
That was Mr. Hunchell and Mr. Fowler. This is a roll call vote to pass the ordinance.
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
And Hunchell?
Yes.
Ordinance passed, six to zero. Thank you. The next one is an ordinance amending various sections of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to require residential tree plantings and natural vegetation preservation for all developments and for other purposes. Is there any discussion?
Motion to approve, second.
I think there's some discussion. Larry?
My only comment is I really support the ordinance. I know that Councilman Hunchell has done a lot of work on it. In fact, it was apparently one of his campaign pins way back when he ran for office, I believe, was a strong item that was on his agenda for action, and in recognition of that, at the bottom, it's not a formal thing, but the attorney puts in there who made the request for the ordinance, and I'd like to respectfully request that it add Councilman Hunchell's name to the mayor's on that request, so, as a final thing. That's not, it's not an action by here because it's an informational thing that the attorney puts on there, but I'd like to see it added.
No plaque or anything?
No plaque.
Unless it's signed, it lights up at night, though. So, you know, some people, we have a work session, we talk about these things, right? So a lot of times at city council, we don't expound any further, but I would like to say, I know there, I believe there's strong support from the community for an ordinance such as this, because whenever Carol goes clearcutting their power lines, I get a lot of feedback, a lot of pushback on that, they're not happy about it, but I also get a lot of pushback on the clearing of lots as well. Why do we allow that? I guess actually they can still clear a lot, but they're going to be required to put trees- I guess actually they can still clear a lot, but they're going to be required to put trees back, so I said I think the community would definitely support this ordinance, so I do as well.
If I may add, I appreciate the kind words, Larry, but the mayor did include me in this broadly. He approached me many months ago, just asked me if I'd be interested, which of course I was. I just did want to point out that any contribution I made was my new staff did an incredible job. I don't think people realize how incredibly hard it is to create an ordinance. I mean, I never really realized the language and everything involved with creating something like this, so Taylor did a great job, and I appreciate all the input and all the help that I've got from everybody. I really do appreciate it, and I hope everybody likes it.
Yeah, so Jim, was your motion to approve that, we got to suspend the rules and move to third and final?
Well, let's suspend the rules and go to third and final.
Second.
It's Mr. Wasniak and Mr. Fowler. Roll call vote on the motion to go to third and final. Suspend the rules, right.
Councilmember Wasniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. I'll read it for the third and final time. Amending various sections of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to require residential tree plantings and natural vegetation preservation for all developments and for other purposes. Any discussion?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
That's Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hansel.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Wilmes?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
And Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next one is an ordinance amending section one-oh-nine dash six-eight general provisions of the Article Three Zoning District Regulations of Chapter one-oh-nine, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista, to allow septic systems and other supporting features of a primary residence to cross rear setbacks upon certain conditions and for other purposes. Staff requests a third and final reading. I'd like to make just a comment on this, you know, sometimes we pass things that maybe don't thrill builders, like what we just passed about trees, and sometimes we have an opportunity to do something that's helpful to them, and I was surprised, Taylor commented when this was on the docket in the work session, commented to me how many people were waiting for this, so there's a lot of activity in corner lots and whatnot where this rear setback, which is really the same thing as doing it on the side, you know, these little things we can clean up to help people out. I think it's a good thing kind of show them that we're, you know, we're trying to meet people partway and trying to be reasonable where we can.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
So moved.
Second.
That's Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wilmes.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. I'll read it for the third and final time. Amending section one-oh-nine point six-eight general provision, provisions of Article Three Zoning District Regulations of Chapter one-oh-nine of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista, to allow septic systems and other supporting features of a primary residence to cross rear setbacks upon certain conditions and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Second.
That's Mr. Hansel and Mr. Fowler.
A question would be, oh, does this include side yards too?
Yes, it's in. We're just adding rear. It's on the second line. If you look in section one and then the quoted language for residentially zoned parcels that are adjacent and under the same ownership, side and rear setbacks may be eliminated. So we just added.
So we already had that.
It's already in there, and we just added the word that we needed.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, we had a motion second?
Yep, we do.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next one is an ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Automotive Group in the total amount of thirty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars for the purchase of one two thousand and twenty-three Dodge Charger Police Pursuit Vehicle for use by the Police Department. Any discussion?
No, I mean, it's already in the budget. It was approved basically when we approved the budget for two thousand and twenty-three at the end of two thousand and twenty-two, so, right.
Yeah, so I think this is one we might want to go to third and final on.
Yep, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final.
Second.
It's Mr. Fowler and Mr.?
I think it's.
Mr. Hansel?
I think so.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. I'll read it for the third and final time. Waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Automotive Group in the total amount of thirty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars for the purchase of one two thousand and twenty-three Dodge Charger Police Pursuit Vehicle for use by the Police Department.
Motion to approve. Second, whatever.
Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wasniak? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next one is an ordinance amending section one-oh-seven dash two-four-nine subdivision design standards of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista, to require underground placement of utilities in all new residential, commercial, and industrial developments and for other purposes. Any discussion?
I guess my question is, it's something that is obvious and required by most of the member, larger member communities around us for a long time, and Bella Vista has finally chosen to move forward with this. I think, I think it'll improve the reliability of the electrical component of the utilities. Most of the rest of them are underground, so that's not overhead, but for electrical, it'll maybe reduce the potential of loss during a severe storm or whatever going through the city, so I think it'll be a benefit long term. It will add to the cost of the development a little, but since we're only dealing with really one utility, it's probably not going to be too bad.
No, I think there's still a provision that allows for if there's some, an undue hardship or if it's not possible, developer comes to the city planning and presents that case, and they could still maybe go ahead and move forward with how they have been doing, or, you know, typically across Bella Vista, but I think it's a good move. I wish our community by and large had enacted this a long time ago because it just cleans things up or keeps things looking clean.
And that may not be a supporting idea by the developers, but it does put some things underground and it does clean it up in terms of appearance a lot, so.
We did have some outreach from Carroll Electric, and they spoke with our staff about it, and I think after speaking with our staff, they were fine with it. Is that fair characterization, Taylor?
Yeah. So, yeah.
Mayor, I think the aesthetics of underground utilities are great. I think it's a good thing, but I think since we've been a city, there's been only two subdivisions that have been built in Bella Vista. I believe that's correct. If not, but I have been informed or have been suggested that this basically will shut down any future subdivisions because the cost of underground utilities is about five times more expensive than overhead, so now whether that's correct or not, I have no idea, but I don't know if there's anyone here to address that or not, but again, as I said, I think the aesthetics of it's great and it looks good and like to see it, but if it shuts down future development, I don't know. Question to be determined at a later date, I'm sure.
We have about twenty thousand lots, I think, is still available for construction on, so I think we're, we have a good inventory, it's just that we won't see a lot of new subdivisions for residential development likely to be created.
It says commercial, it says developments, it doesn't say subdivisions unless the.
It would be the, any resident, any development residential subdivision, any new subdivisions. Existing ones are exempt because they already are here.
I think they mentioned, I thought in the work session, they mentioned it would be four houses or more.
Then it's platted and unplatted. If it's already platted, it doesn't affect it. If it's unplatted, then it would. Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
So a new subdivision versus the existing. Well, if it's not platted, some are already platted and just nothing's going on. Well, but the lots are already there. Yeah, so they wouldn't be included in this. Correct, yeah.
So as Finch, I mean, this would affect reserved properties, right? That might be developed, but to your point, not that it's already platted.
Right. The big thing is platted. Or redevelopment of commercial property would be affected too, I'm presuming. Is that a fair statement, Taylor?
Yeah, it was a residential that we figured they were expanding or moving to two thousand or three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, because we thought it was just like we had plenty of drive concrete, they had to re-put the toes, they had to actually, we didn't
I was inclined to think maybe this wasn't an item that should go to third and final, you know, give people a little chance to, I mean, there may be people want to comment on it, and it's only been a week since it came up in the work session, you know, give them a little time to figure it out, and maybe they want to come to the meeting and.
Well, it was handed out at the work session as well, right, going on the agenda.
Yeah.
So, yeah. I said this at the work session, and I'll reiterate, it is not going to require existing poles to be taken down and lines to be buried in existing neighborhoods, it does not do that at all.
It's only on, only on new development that's being created, so.
Well, essentially, it removes the ambiguity out of the language of the existing, so rather than it being a request of staff, it just cements the idea that this is how we do things, so.
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Third and final.
No, yeah, I apologize.
That's all right.
One second.
He was true.
Well, no, I agree with what the mayor was saying.
I want to wait.
Yeah, I want to wait. I apologize. I got ahead of myself.
Okay, next one is, so that'll proceed to second reading. Next one is a resolution expressing support for a citizen effort to authorize a levy of an additional one-half mil ad valorem property tax to support police pensions in the city. Now, as I mentioned in the work session, this doesn't require council approval, it required signatures from citizens, from twenty citizens, but I thought it'd be a good idea to bring it before council and, you know, have you folks be aware of it and hopefully support it.
Just for like a little perspective on me, I just happened to get my handy-dandy little property tax statement about a week or two ago, and for me personally, it would cost me twenty-four dollars and eighty-one cents in property taxes, that's what it would be, if you don't, because it's twenty-four eighty-one now, you double it to twenty-four eighty-one, so that's what it would be, twenty-five bucks annually, as of now, what my house is valued at.
Yeah.
So it's pretty normal.
Some will be less and some will be more.
Yes.
Hi, Jerry.
So this can be added without a vote of the people? It can be done by petition only?
No, that, the petition puts it on the ballot, and then it would be on the ballot in November.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good question. You know, we have, you can assess five mils without a vote of the people, and we've only assessed four. We could have just assessed half a mil, but I thought it was important to have a vote of the people and have the people decide. I don't like to impose taxes on people as opposed to having them figure it out, even though, as Doug mentioned, it's not a real big amount. We had it calculated for the average house of being a little bit less than nineteen dollars a year. That's for the average. If you have a nicer house, obviously be more, and for a lot of people, be even less than that, but, you know, I just felt it was better to have the people vote on it, even though it takes a little bit of effort on our part.
At the work session, you talked about the total amount that that half mil means, and right now the city is covering for that half mil, right? What was the amount?
Right now, the cost is five hundred and seven thousand, that's what it was last year, and the amount we're taking in is three hundred and eleven thousand, so we're short almost two hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
And we, Jason and I did verify on the timing, the county needs to hear from us by October twenty, and this vote would be on November fourteen, so if we voted and it was approved in November twenty, or October twenty of next year, we'd tell the county about this new village, and because the taxes are behind, it would kick in, and I think it's October twenty-twenty-six. So it's really planning ahead, basically. You see that you're underwater and it takes you.
And it's just going to grow.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be more under, by the time the tax kicks in, we'll be more underwater than we are now.
And we, and one mil was approved for the fire, it's just a half mil was approved for the police at the initial.
Yeah, you're allowed to go up to one mil.
Right.
And they chose, back in twenty-fourteen, they chose to just do half a mil for the police, thinking that was enough, and it was for a while, so.
Well, now, the fire department, the fire department's pension collection, it's, is it underwater also?
Yes, yeah, even though it's one mil, so.
Good.
So I thought about that a lot, it's a little discouraging that we're behind because this is an obligation, it's not an obligation that's going away or that we can control even, and I think one of the reasons we're underwater is, if you think about it, we, if we had more commercial, it would help to close that gap, so as you all know, in the long run, we'd like to work on that anyway and get some more commercial.
Now, do you have some citizens kind of fingered to leave this drive for these signatures?
Yeah, we have all the signatures already, so, yeah. So, yeah, there's some citizens that were very enthused about it.
You don't have the signatures, you have the people that run the program to get the signature.
No, we have the signatures.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right.
One of the enthused citizens is sitting in the front row, and I'm not going to name any names, so.
So how many, how many signatures did it take?
Well, you need twenty, and we got thirty just to be safe, but one thing it causes you to think about is these things people tried to put on the ballot that take fifty-six thousand signatures or whatever. I've decided I'm never going to do that personally, somebody else can try to do it if they want, but that's a huge job. Getting twenty, not too bad, right?
One is a state level and the other one is a local level.
Yeah, so.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Excuse me, who's the second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, Wilmes, thank you. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
A motion carried, six to zero. Okay, next one is, I, resolution amending the 2023 budget to redesign $53,000 in capital budget from the West Side, salt and sand storage project to the purchase of a dump truck for use by the street department. And of course, Karen Hunt was here at the work session and explained to us how all this came about, and it's, I told her she didn't need to come tonight since she'd already explained it, so. Anyway, so it's, the capital budget is still the same for this year, she's just taking some extra funds she had in one pot and using it to, to help buy the dump truck, so. Any discussion?
Motion to approve, second.
That was Mr. Wilms and Mr. Hansel. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wilms?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next one is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Freezin Nichols, Inc., in amount not to exceed 235,500 for review of city plans and for drafting proposed revisions to city zoning and development ordinances and maps. Is there any discussion on that?
I know, we spoke about this at length during the work session. There's been a conversation going on for quite a while within the city, particularly within the planning department, that we needed to study done of our zoning ordinances. They were pretty much just kind of, you know, cobbled together, and I'm not making any comment about anything, the city came together, came together very quickly, and we used, you know, other cities directives and things like that, and Bella Vista is very unique. And I'm certainly not the only one setting up front here that spent a lot of time with the planning department and understands the issues that we have with zoning in Bella Vista, there are a bunch of holes and gaps and just things that quite frankly just don't make sense, and so we're trying to fix that kind of like one piece at a time, and it's just very laborious and it really isn't getting us anywhere. And to try to tackle this within the city with our resources that we do have, we run a very lean organization here, a very lean city government, I don't know if, if anything could really ever be put together in total, so we need, we need a consultant, somebody that does this specifically and puts these plans together. And the 225,000, we already budgeted 160,000 for 2023 for this project, and all the 200, what, did I say 200, 235,500? We, we will not have that full expenditure this year, we won't have 160,000, so we're budgeted to cover this year and then we'll put the additional part in the budget next year, and this is scheduled to be done and completed by the end of 2024, so it's quite a long process, and it's just time for us really to, you know, 30,000 people, I heard that mentioned earlier tonight, to really, you know, be a city of 30,000 people and get this done, so.
Yeah, I think it's a worthwhile endeavor. Jerry Snow?
$235,000 is a pretty substantial contract. I understand this, there was only one bid, is that right? No, there's more than one?
Taylor, did you, or Taylor or Doug, you want to speak to that?
Did you ask if only one contractor applied?
No.
Yes, yeah, that's one thing.
We had four apply. We went through a pretty substantial RFQ process of interviews and of course, the proposals submitted, we got a selection committee that rated the initial submittals of all four, that gave us our top three, and then at that top three, we had interviews and presentations, and then we had another rating from the interviews, and that gave us our top one, which was Freezin Nichols.
Good. As a clarification, being professional services, we need to use this process in selecting the firm to work with as, as you've described it, and it would apply for engineering as well, so.
Correct, best practice.
So, again, as I said, 235,000, pretty substantial contract. Do we have any idea of what the, the STR litigation is going to cost us?
Don't know. I guess personally, I don't know that one has anything to do with the other. I think the intent of, of this contract is to address shortfalls in our planning and zoning codes and to address the recommendation in our 2040 plan that said we needed to review those codes and update them to implement the parts of that 2040 plan, so.
What, what one has to do with the other is the, is the expense, I mean, do we have any idea, substantial expense, do we have any idea?
I don't anticipate substantial expense related to the STR litigation.
I should point out that we are using in-house counsel in the STR litigation, so presumably the other side is spending money by the hour and we're not.
Well, but they, there has been, there's litigation for damages though, and I mean, we, we've already.
I'm not going to discuss details of the litigation.
Do what?
I'm not going to discuss details of the litigation.
It's not, it's not for public discussion, basically?
I, I do not anticipate significant public expense related to the short-term rental litigation.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you said the first time, I thought you said you weren't here to discuss it.
I do not anticipate.
Okay.
Significant expense related to the short-term rental litigation.
Okay, significant expense, all right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That was Mr. Hansel and Jim Wozniak.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carries, six to zero. The next one is approving the final plat of the Trail Ridge subdivision and accepting public rights of way dedicated therein, and this, of course, is the proposed subdivision we discussed at the work session. I believe it's off of Forest Hills Boulevard, has possibility 38 homes in it. Any discussion?
Well, once again, I mean, there was a, you know, pretty extensive discussion or at least comment during the work session last week, but this is one of the very first things I voted on when I was first elected, six and a half years ago, and it was, you know, made pretty clear to me that as long as the minimum requirements of our ordinance have been met, then we really cannot oppose it, and I think the minimum requirements, according to the planning department, have been met, all the requirements, so I would be certainly be, you know, supportive of it, there's not any reason, I can't find any reason why we wouldn't support it. And I know there were a couple of issues, I think with some culverts or drain pipes, things like that, but that was, that was solved for, that was spoken for, and everybody seemed to agree that that wasn't going to be any situation or anything to be concerned about in, in the long run, so, yeah. I don't, you know, said, I don't know how we couldn't approve it at this point.
Larry?
I, I had a lot of questions at the work session, and some of them we weren't able to answer internally when we talked about it, and I made a phone call to Mr. Attorney Gross Close and spoke with him about the questions that I had, and so I have a better understanding as to why the language is in, is in as a part of the general notes on the plat, we've seen them before, I think I've raised that question to the planning commission before on, on prior documents that they've processed, and I think I have a better understanding of it. And it really has to do with, with the covenants, if you will, that's not what they're called, but that's what I call them, which are the deed restrictions that the developer recorded way back before he platted his first subdivision, and they apply to all of the land that they create land divisions for, whether it's a commercial development or whether it's a platted land in an individual lot, so it's, it's consistent throughout all of their development. Something that was raised by the city apparently early on, I think when we incorporated and was addressed by a consensus between the council and CCI as to how we would address that, those provisions that they have recorded, so. I, I, I think it's going to be a good addition to the city, it has sewer service throughout, I think it's a nicely laid out subdivision, will be a good addition for growth, even though it adds more vacant lots, there's just more choices for the prospective people wanting to move to Bella Vista, so I certainly support it.
I apologize, I just did have one question as I was reading it, so there were two issues, one of them was with the, I'm going to call it culvert pipes, I guess, and that was, that was all settled, but on the renaming of the streets, so is it just a partial renaming of the initial naming of the streets that we couldn't do because those were duplicate street names for Streets and Rogers? So did that affect any of the other residents, and I just assumed they would be okay with it? Because the streets kind of continue, right, they go around, so did some of the residents have to change their addresses?
No, no one has to change any addresses. What had happened was, I know it's mentioned as a waiver, but it's not a section 107-35 waiver, which is a waiver of the subdivision, subdivision code, it's a waiver of our plan requirements, so essentially, street names are supposed to be like finalized at the time of preliminary plat, however, since this preliminary plat came through planning commission to the time the final plat came through, Benton County had updated, or Benton County 911 that controls the addressing here, had updated their requirements that no street name can be duplicated within the entire county, and so the two street names that are the dead-end cul-de-sacs already existed elsewhere in Benton County, and so they had to seek a waiver of a plat requirement, not our subdivision code, so that they could update the streets to meet our Benton County 911 address requirements, but no, no one had to change.
No current, no current residents of that, kind of would surround into part of another subdivision, well, I think it's all the same subdivision, right?
Well, this one's a new one, Trails Ridge will not be a part of the one of the west or east, it's its own subdivision, it was going to be named similar to the subdivisions to the east, but it has since been renamed, but, yeah, Bylin Lane already exists and it just continues on through and connects to 279, no changes.
Gotcha, thank you.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
That was Mr. Wilms and Mr. Hansel. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next one is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a sixth amendment to the limited terminable license agreement, trail system license, with Bella Vista Village Property Owners Association, Inc., for the purpose of adding parcels for expansion of the public trail system. Before discussion, there's one thing I forgot to mention before when I was talking about the trails and that survey done several years ago by the POA. The survey didn't say, would you rather have such and such for $200,000 or the trail for free? They left that part out, they said, would you rather have such and such or a trail? That's a very different question than the question that's actually facing us. POA did pass this in July, and that was before the city, but, but the survey didn't mention the part about how one thing's free and the other thing costs you a lot of money, which I think would have changed some people's answer.
Yeah, as I said, I just, you know, thought I'd deserve, you know, comment for now versus what was said during private comment. I, I personally separate POA business from city business, you know, they have their, their lane and we have our lane, and, but I do know the POA board did approve these trails, and two of them are tagged as connectors and the other ones are beginner loops, so they're connectors, they're not like, you know, 50 or 35 or 45, 60 miles of trails, what is it, total of seven miles, I believe is what it is? And so a lot of these, first of all, connectors, I mean, just for what it's worth, I, I use the trails, I was out on the trail this morning at 6:30, and I encountered a group of walkers, there were about 10 of them, a couple bicycle riders over where I live, and what I have to do where I live, I have to go out and I have to come back, and I, I have other ways I can go where I can do these, but it's really nice to be able to do a loop and kind of short, you know, shorten those outs and backs, so you see something different. And I believe it was mentioned by the people that spoke that they were up on a hill and their trailer would be, behind their house would be in a ravine, and the trails that I walk are in the ravines, and I've never encountered or seen anybody in the house up above, and they can't see me either, I'm pretty quiet, and when the bikers come by, they're huffing and puffing and they're going, I mean, they're, they're like ghosts, you know, when they go by on the trails, they're, they're really not, I don't think, interruptive of, of anybody, and, and I, when I was kind of looking at these maps, a lot of the trails, by and large, are, there are parcels of land that can be built for residential, but at least for the present time, it looks like most of the lots are undeveloped from where these trails are being put in, and I guarantee you, when these trails go in in some of those areas, you're going to start seeing houses put there, because a lot of people want to live on the trails, just like the lakes and the golf courses, et cetera. So I, I do hate it whenever, you know, there's a trail that appears to be right in somebody's backyard or affects a couple of people, and I think that's just kind of a natural occurrence of what's going to happen when you're developing something like this, but these trails really are a big benefit, you know, to our community and to the residents that live here, and we all know, we have a lot of people moving here just because we do have the trails. So if, if, and two, I don't know, I'm not aware of, the chief of police is here, I haven't really heard of, like, really any negative occurrences on the trail between bikers or walkers and residents that I'm aware of, and maybe there's been something that's happened, but I, I don't know what, what that is at this particular point, and I didn't really hear any feedback from anybody in the community before tonight on this proposal, so I'm supportive of it and, and I, I do hope that it isn't interruptive of too many residents that live in Bella Vista, really, if something's right in their backyard, so I'm supportive of it though.
Jerry?
Is there someone that, in the case of the people that spoke tonight, where there's a trail very close to their house or in their backyard, so to speak? I've heard, I've heard other people refer to the, the trails being extra close to their house, is there somebody associated with the trail system that can be reached out to that would make any kind of effort to move the trail a little ways away from wherever it's?
They, they do do that, I know they do, but these trails, from what I heard, are down in the ravine behind their house, I think, so when they're like that, I mean, you don't even, I don't know that there are people up there and I don't think they know that I'm down here, so. But yes, they have moved trails, to answer your question, for, considering resident concerns.
So if someone has a complaint regarding a trail in that situation, who do they contact? Who do they need to reach out to?
Oh, the trailblazers, yeah, NWA trailblazers, yeah. Who's, we, who's our trail person in Bella Vista now? The person we hired?
Our, our, I could trace the person who was there, Justin actually went to visit with the property owners and looked for the trail was and found markers, he said that the trail was, he felt like they would shift it downhill a little more, but he did say it's 75 yards or more.
Is, is that the people that were here tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
So we've, we've, what you're saying, Mr. Tap, is that we've attempted to address their concern?
75 yards is a long way.
Yeah, that's, but it is, it's way far.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wilms. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Snow?
I had originally intended to vote no out of respect to Ms. Hernandez, but after that the trail is being moved, I will vote yes.
You should just say yes or no, he said.
I guess, you know, I'm an elected official, if I want to say something, I'll say something.
I'm advising the mayor, and it's up to, mayor, you run the meeting, I don't, but debate during the roll call is out of order and against the rules.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not making any debate, I just made a statement.
Yeah, I, I think we, I think, I got the thrust of your statement, so.
Say what?
I understand what you said.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think the people did also.
All right.
So go ahead and vote.
I voted.
Oh, okay.
I voted yes. I voted yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
And Honsel?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next one is a resolution amending the twenty-twenty-three budget to appropriate sixty thousand in police impact fees to the police department for procurement attributable to the impact of new development. And this was something the chief, I think, described at the work session, that we had some finishing work to be done on the Public Safety Building, and we had used up the bond money, so we were gonna use sixty thousand dollars in impact fees. Would you like, I, I, we could have him come up and explain a little more if you'd like, or?
Yeah, I don't, I don't. I don't have a need to. I think we talked about it at the work session, to my satisfaction.
Mr. Wozniak?
Second.
Mr. Wozniak and Mr. Fowler. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Honsel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
And Wilms?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Last one is a resolution establishing salaries for mayor, city council member, and city clerk. And the resolution recounts the amounts, and I had some backup information for you about the different items. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wozniak?
Again, I'd like to break out us from that. I'm okay with the clerk, I'm sort of okay with the mayor, I'm definitely not okay with city council's amount. So, again, I would like to break that out, if I can, and vote on that separately.
Do we need to make a motion to split it?
All amendments have to be in writing, and we don't have one written, because I didn't hear from you. So, if we wanted to amend it, to delete, or actually to split this into separate ordinances, we gotta have a written amendment for it to be in order.
Well, and it goes through, I'll just vote no.
Or you can table it to next month, and then we can have an amendment ready for you then.
So, I have to, have to get it on paper, or can I just table it right here?
You know, you table, a motion to table is, doesn't have to be in writing, amendments have to be in writing, motions do not. A motion's a mechanism, so if you want to table it to next month, that does not have to be in writing. An amendment has to be in writing.
So, you're telling me I can table the whole thing, or just the one part?
You can table the whole thing, you can't table a part of it.
Okay.
What, you might want to mention to people what you had in mind for council.
No more than the cost of living, or zero.
Well, some was, some was.
By cost of living, you mean inflation, the CPI?
Whatever the, you know, there's a number that goes around the country every year, three or four percent, whatever it is.
Right, yeah.
That would be the number I would put in, or I would put in zero.
Okay, well, I think if you went from January one, twenty-twenty-two, to January one, twenty-twenty-four, and looked up the CPI, I think it's right around ten percent, might even be a little higher. I mean, we're not at January one yet, but.
Yeah, so, it's kind of like, I just waited until the meeting, you know, I didn't really mention it at the work session. You know, so, we're talking about eight hundred and eighty dollars for city council. The last time there was a bump was two years ago, probably two years until there's another one, so, yeah, you had your initial bump, I don't know, you're talking about a couple hundred dollars a year, so it's, it's not a lot of money. And I don't look at it as a raise at all, in, in larger guard, I look, look at it as a reimbursement. I mean, I'm certainly not making any money here, I'm not making a car or house payment with this, but I use my vehicle, spend money for gas, I use my own personal computer, I use my printer, my paper, my ink, my time, which is significant, and I'm not complaining, I signed up for it, and I, we also pay taxes on that money. So, in my humble opinion, I think what we do earn, if you want to call that, I think is, this is warranted. I'm not gonna be, I'm not like a long timer either, I'm actually thinking about people in the future that may want to consider to come on board, but I don't think it's unreasonable. And I don't think that the city clerk increases being asked for is unreasonable, nor do I think the mayor's is unreasonable. It's a big commitment, and there's a lot that goes into it, a lot more than probably a lot of people realize, so you can propose to table it if you want, I won't vote for it, but, but if it is passed till the table next week, then I'll still be in the same position I am now.
Well, I'm not gonna do anything, I'm just gonna vote no, and with the understanding that I am for those two and against the other, and I'm probably gonna lose. That's my opinion, I just think we don't deserve that kind of money.
You don't think we deserve?
Not ten percent, yeah, period, end of the statement.
You know, two times nominal is still nominal, so, don't get me wrong, I'm not gonna debate the money, it's not a lot of money, you know, but.
But you keep talking about it.
Well, you got brought up, so, yeah, I'm just giving you my opinion, you know, so I sit on the council, just like you do, and I just took you through the rationale for why I think it's, 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 it's not, it's not unreasonable. It's, it's, it's a reimbursement, it's what it is, it's not a salary, so, anyway.
Well, since I proposed it, I just wanted to mention, I've always said the key to keeping the price of the taxpayers down is that there's six councilmen, and there's no benefits. That's the key. Some of these other cities, if they're paying twelve grand, which they are, twelve grand a year, and they have eight or ten council people, is, hey, that's, gets to be real money. As long as you have six, and you're fairly reasonable, it's not gonna add up to that much. I've always thought that was the key to it. Go ahead, Jerry.
Always a question, it's always seems to be the council, I mean, we, in the past couple of years, I think it's been, we went like two years, and it was not a raise, and then prior to that, there was a, a motion to exclude the council from any raise, but the only question is, we're elected officials like everybody else, why always the council to be excluded whenever there's any kind of conversation regarding raises? Seems to be that way, so, I, again, I got to support it.
I, I, I guess in my humble opinion, the amount of time I spend on city business is pretty extensive when you go through the end of the week. There are other committees that meet, planning commission's agenda is not short, they have a lot of items, there's a lot of reading if you're going to follow that, and, and participate, and I do go to the meetings, and I do speak to the, to the, when the public input is requested at times, both pro and con, to the items on the agenda as I see it and view it as a resident of Bella Vista, but nonetheless, it still takes review time for that. There are other, other committees that are out there, we get lots of material that we get through the email, through the incoming mail at the, at the city hall. We have certainly an agenda this time, that's what, a hundred and ninety-two pages long? If you do any due diligence, you're going to look at a good majority of that, not only just look at it, you're going to read it, and does it make sense, do you understand it, what are things that are in there? That's where I get a lot of my information, as well as calls from constituents, had calls from constituents on Saturdays and on Sundays, and, and the evenings, and emails, and I'm sure all of you on the council have experienced the same. Sometimes we all get the same email, sometimes it's individuals. So, I, and we, we have been, I think, diligent in not accepting a raise on the council, while raises have been granted and endorsed by this body for the clerk and for the mayor. And I, I don't see, what is, eight hundred dollar, is that the number, eight hundred and eighty-dollar increase is being huge? If anything, it covers the increased cost of our operation to support for paper supplies and ink and computer repairs and driving mileage and all the rest of that, that we put on in our own vehicles, so I, I don't think it's unwarranted, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's being generous on the city side for that request, so I, I support it.
So, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
In a second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wilms. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wilms?
Yes.
Hughes?
No.
Honsel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wozniak?
No.
Motion carried, four to two.
I didn't get to vote.
Oh, you didn't?
Did you call me?
Oh, I did, you voted yes.
Okay.
Mayor, can I, could I have one moment before you get in the announcements? I want to defend myself. I have the unenviable task of sitting here and trying to corral all you. And I don't do it out of any, I have no personal agenda in doing it, I have no reason to say it sometimes and not others. I hope that when I speak up, you all realize, particularly when it's a rule of procedure, that it's because it's what the rules require, and it's not related to any one of you, I'll, I'll probably, if I haven't already, I will eventually say something and probably interrupt all of you at one point or another, because you can't do what you want to do, not that you're trying to do anything bad, it's just, we've got rules, we have to follow the rules, okay? So, you have Rule Seven G, it's about voting, and I'm gonna read it to you. For all ordinances, resolutions, and most motions, a roll call vote will be conducted where every member present, when a question is put to a vote, shall vote yes, no, or abstain, and the vote will be recorded by the city clerk. And I'm gonna jump forward to some stuff, and then we say, except for a question necessary to clarify the meaning of a motion, resolution, or ordinance, that being like, what are we voting on? Or does this mean yes or no? No questions or comments by members of the city council, including the mayor, shall be made during the voting on the pending motion, resolution, or order. The council members will vote at city council meetings in the order of their reward and position number, but with a progressively different position, voting first on each item at each meeting. I don't make this stuff up, and I don't say it because I'm trying to get at anybody, or I'm trying to make a point, or I'm trying to express an opinion, it's what you're paying me to do. And if you don't like the rules, you can change the rules. But when the rules are what the rules are, I have got to tell you what they are. And it, I know all of you are elected, trust me.
I have a, I have a quick question, sir. If you do have a question during the roll call vote or a statement, what do you do?
You can't ask it. Unless it is a question necessary to clarify the meaning of a motion, resolution, or ordinance. So, I mean, when your name is called, if you have that very limited thing, that is the moment, it is only limited to that, but if it goes beyond that, and why you're voting the way you're voting, and who you talk to, and, and all the, that's, that's debate. So, when I say debate is not allowed, it's not that you're arguing with someone, it's that you're talking, that's debate. So, that's it.
Well, that makes the point that it's important that I don't rush people to a vote, because you have to make sure everybody gets to say what they want to say beforehand, right?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Larry has an announcement he, he wanted to bring up before I make the meeting announcements.
We, we will have this year, I am informed, a Northwest Arkansas Festival in Bella Vista, commonly and formerly known as the Arts and Crafts Fair. It's privately set up by, the, the group that's forming it is called the NWA Festival Association. I think it's a private, private group, I don't know if they're for profit or not for profit, but they are organizing and will have an arts and crafts festival in Bella Vista on the arts and crafts grounds, September twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth, so put that on your calendar. It's a little early from the, earlier from the October time that we normally have, which is, I think, the second weekend in October, third, third weekend? So, it'll be at the conventionals, at the regular site on Forest Hills Road across from the church down the street. They have exhibitors that are signing up, you can get on them by going to the internet, nwa-festival.com. I have a phone number, if you would like that phone number, it's the Arts and Crafts Festival, barbecue competition, a chili cook-off, and a car show, so it's gonna be a whiz-bang operation. It's the first year that we've had something back, I think, since COVID, when they decided not to continue with that program. So, I'd like to make sure everyone in Bella Vista participates, I think it should be a fun time, should be good for the city, so, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Other announcements, the next city council work session is five-thirty PM on Monday, September eighteen. Next city council regular meeting is six-thirty PM, Monday, September twenty-five. Planning commission work session, four-thirty PM, Thursday, August thirty-one. Planning commission regular meeting, four-thirty PM, Monday, September eleven. Board of Construction Appeals, three PM Tuesday, September twelve, if necessary, and all of those are at the Bella Vista District Court. Thank you, we are adjourned.